All right, welcome back. So our next item is the 6:49, 45 a.m. We're sitting as the Board of Directors of Lake County Watershed Protection District, Watershed Protection District, acting as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. We will A, hold a public hearing to receive stakeholder comments on the final draft of the Big Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan and technical appendices, and B, consider adoption of a resolution adopting the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan and to authorize the Director of the Lake County Water Resources Department or designated appointee to submit the adopted documents to the California Department of Water Resources in compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. When we have Water Resources Deputy Director Marina Delagiani is here with us, and we'll give the floor to you.
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and kick it off to Director Scott DeLeon for a quick introduction.
Sorry about that, Scott. I didn't, I was looking in the room.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Director DeLeon.
That's all right. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Good morning, Board. I'm Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. I am very pleased to be here this morning to introduce this item, which is a public hearing for your Board to consider the final draft of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Today's action is the culmination of months of work that is nothing short of remarkable. And with that, I'd like to again introduce Marina Delagianis, the Deputy Director of Water Resources, who will present this item and likely introduce our consultants, who are also with us today to help make this presentation. So with that, thank you very much, Board.
Thank you, Director Scott DeLeon, and thank you, Board of Directors, acting as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency/GSA. I am super excited to be here. I know I'm usually pretty excited when it comes to groundwater and our compliance with California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, but I am extremely excited today, as this is a huge milestone for our community, as Director Scott DeLeon said. This has been a very long process, and I am very, very proud of our team, our Groundwater Sustainability Agency Advisory Committee, and our stakeholders, who have helped really put us here where we're at today. So with that being said, Marina Delagianis, Deputy Water Resources Director, I also serve as the lead for the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. I am joined here with some of our team members, and I am joined here with William.
Hello, my name is William Fox, and I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator for the Lake County Water Resources Department, and served as technical and field support for the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Thank you. And I'll pass it over to Eddie Teasdale, our consultant for the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan.
Great, thank you, William. Yeah, this is Eddie Teasdale with Luder from Stellmanini Consulting Engineers. I'm a hydrogeologist, and I've been the project manager on this, on this task. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to Kristi at Stantec.
Hi, I'm Kristi Clark, and I am with Stantec Consulting, and I have been working for about the last two years with Marina and William, as both the lead facilitator for communication, and then also with the tech team. So Ibrahim, I'll go ahead and pass it to you.
Good morning, Ibrahim Kadham with Stantec, being the technical lead on preparing the GSP, working closely with Eddie and Kristi and the team.
Megan?
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Murray. I am a Water Resources Planner with Stantec, and I have served as the documentation lead for the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And I will begin sharing my screen here for Marina to run through the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. And as Megan mentioned, I have a very brief presentation just to set the stage. I know we've all heard this before, but we can never talk enough about groundwater. So if you go ahead, Megan, don't mind going to slide number two, please. All right, so why are we here? Again, we are successfully complying with California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So of course, in 2014, California passed the California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, also referred to as SIGMA. And this basically sets the stage for us here at the local level to make sure that we are sustainably managing our groundwater basin. So out of all the groundwater basins that we have in the county, we are working with only one basin, and that is our Big Valley Groundwater Basin, very ag-heavy. It is in the southern portion of the county, I'm sorry, excuse me, of the, right below Clear Lake. And I also want to highlight some of the support that we've received from California, State Water Resource Department, and the State Water Resources Control Board. So SIGMA also provides us the framework, again, to ensure that we are managing our groundwater basin sustainably, but also locally. So they rely heavily on us here at the local level, including stakeholders, the Watershed Protection District, et cetera, because we live in our basin, we know our basin, right? But they have also helped us tremendously. Some of the resources that we've been able to be provided by the state include funds, which, while we're here today, we were awarded a little under 1.4 million under California Sustainable Groundwater Management Program to develop and implement our GSP. So many kudos to them, and that's how we were able to onboard our awesome team of consultants to help us develop this GSP to the best of our ability. We were also awarded facilitation support services, again, to help us develop a communication and engagement outreach plan that is not only required by SIGMA, but to make sure that we are bringing all the proper people to the table and that we are continuing on these conversations. We have also awarded technical support services through California Department of Water Resources. Many kudos to William Fox, who was able to submit the application to help us increase the understanding of the conditions of our groundwater basin. You all have been familiar and may have seen the huge helicopter that was flying over our groundwater basin. That was the airborne electromagnetic surveys, again, just to give us a better idea of the conditions of our groundwater basins. We should be receiving those results in the next year, too. And then also just a letter of support from the State Water Resource Control Board commending us on our efforts. We were a little bit behind the game before we started, but now we're up to speed, so a huge shout out to the state for all their support and guidance and expertise during this development process. Next slide, please, Megan. Thank you. All right, so what is a groundwater sustainability plan, also referred to as a GSP? The state not only tells us, hey, you guys should do this, but also how do we do this? So you can check out all of our GSP documents on the Water Resources website. We have all of the chapters here. I hope you can see this. If not, go to Water Resources website. We have it available, or you can come visit us on the third floor, and we can help you gain access to this document. So many, many pages, but basically what this document tells us is what are the conditions of our groundwater basin, and how we are going to sustainably manage our groundwater basin. Next slide, please. So during the entire process of our groundwater sustainability plan, it has been public-facing. Again, we were not able to do this without the dedicated community members who have been involved with us since the past year or so, who have actively come to all of our meetings. We've had multiple meetings, 36-plus meetings, to be exact, that have all been available to the public. As we can imagine, the COVID pandemic has been very difficult for us to meet, but we were able to have some hybrid meetings, where of course, social distancing protocols were in place, and we had access to Zoom as well, and we did have translation services available. So this was just one of many ways that we were able to get the community involved, so between public, Big Valley groundwater, public meeting, open houses, so folks were able to come, talk to our consultants. If there was a chapter or an aspect of the GSP that they were not familiar with or did not comprehend, they could come talk to us, and we can walk them through it. We also have our monthly Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. I would like to give a huge kudos and shout out to this dedicated roughly 10 members of the public. You can see we have members sitting on the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee from Water Resources, Special Districts, Big Valley Rancheria, Lake County Farm Bureau, Lake County Land Trust, Kelseyville Unified School District, and the Tribe Council, among with also private well owners, domestic well owners, and then again, members of the public were able to come here. So with this, our consultants were able to have these one-on-one discussions, including sub-technical, sub-technical committee meetings, where we were able to do a deeper dive into whether it be the hydrologic model, groundwater-dependent ecosystems, sustainable management criteria, et cetera, where we were able to get all this info and knowledge sharing. And our consultants also were able to come visit us here in Lake County a few times for some field days, where not only we were able to talk about what we were developing, but they could also see what we were talking about, whether it be the Kelsey Creek detention structure, or hitch, et cetera. They were able to get boots on the ground and see what we were talking about, and how we were going to incorporate all this information into our groundwater sustainability plan. Next slide, please. All right, so among the opportunities, so every chapter that came out, every part of this document that was completed, not only did our GSPAC, which again, is our Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, have the opportunity to review these chapters, again, huge, huge kudos to them, because this is a very hefty document, if folks can see right here. They took the time and effort and energy to read all of these pages, provide input and comments to our consultants, to make sure that we were doing everything properly. So not only did our advisory committee have the opportunity to read this document, the public did, too. So we did hold a formal 21-day public comment period, where we were able to collect all these public comments, and then put them in a matrix, which you can see in Chapter, Section 7, Appendix 7(c), which outlined every comment that was submitted, and not only what comment was submitted, but how we addressed it. So besides the public comment period that we had, we also, again, we took every comment that was submitted, whether it be during an advisory committee meeting, a public meeting via email, those were all addressed, thank you, to the hard work of our team, including our consultants. So I would just like to go over very briefly from the public comment period that was, that was, that took place for our draft groundwater sustainability plan. There were five main themes that were commented on, and again, you can find that in Section 7(c) in our GSP, and those main themes were the updating of the basin characterization, the groundwater-dependent ecosystem identification, also referred to as GDEs, our monitoring network, our sustainable management criteria, projects and management actions. So not, again, not only was outlined when those came up, how many folks commented on them, but how they were addressed in our GSP. Next slide, please. All right, so we're not done yet. I want to just reiterate that our GSP is not the end of this process. In fact, this is the starting point of ensuring that we reach and maintain sustainability for our, our Big Valley groundwater basin. So folks may think, oh, you know, this is the last opportunity that we have to be involved in these discussions. Have no fear, it is not. We are going to continue the momentum, and in fact, the momentum's going to continue on forward. So this is a crucial aspect of making sure that we meet this deadline of January 31st, 2022, to make sure that we can maintain local control of our groundwater basin. So a few other opportunities that we will have to revisit this GSP and make sure that we are able to meet what is in this GSP, look at the data that is coming through, as I outlined in the previous discussion, our previous slides, we are collecting a lot of data as we go on. We have a solid understanding of the conditions of our groundwater basin, but we are, all we, we all know that things are changing, and that's the whole reason why SIGMA was put into place. So we will have an annual report that is due in April, again, revisiting what we outlined, any updated information that we have. We also have a five-year plan and et cetera. So this is the starting point, all the flags are going, and we're going to continue to take off to make sure that we comply with SIGMA and make sure that we maintain sustainability in our basin. And the last slide, please, Megan. Awesome. So I like to always end the slide with our contact information. All of this material, all of the archived information is on the Water Resources website. We also have YouTube, so if you want to go back in your board one day, you can watch all of our previous meetings. You can find the meeting agendas and the meeting summaries as well. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead. Megan, if you could stop sharing your screen, please, and I'm going to welcome our team up to field any questions that our Groundwater Sustainability Agency may have, and then the public. Thank you.
Anyone from the, the team, if you have anything to add to Director Delagian, or Deputy Director Delagianis' statement, please go ahead and speak, if you will. Okay, doesn't look like we have anything to add. Mr. Fox, do you have anything to add, or?
No, just the fact that I, I've really appreciated all the support from our consulting team, the public, the GSPAC, the GSA as well. I feel very lucky to serve here and to work here, and so with that, I'd like to break it open for open, for public comment.
Okay. Any questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
I will say there's one thing that stood out to me, and maybe I've had a misunderstanding this entire time. I've thought groundwater, something below the ground, and there's a huge section, and it speaks oftentimes about the hitch, and I, I was just flipping through, like, is there a project? Like, is there an idea? It all makes sense in the sense that groundwater comes from where? It doesn't just automatically get forced underground, it has to come from rain, from lakes, from just bodies of water. But since this is called groundwater, I'm kind of curious, is it just a, because if the groundwater does well, and our water table is sustainable, then I would suspect that that means that whatever the current status is of our streams and our creeks with the hitch would also continue as is, which is not necessarily great in comparison to the past, but it would continue as is. A healthy groundwater would possibly mean a healthy stream and other bodies of water. But is there something more specific as to what is anticipated to be done here with this SIGMA program when it comes to the hitch?
Yeah, so great question, and you hit the nail on the head right there with that. So we do have representatives from the Tribe Council, and we also do acknowledge that the hitch, we have, you know, creeks, some of their main spawning tributaries in our Big Valley Basin. So what SIGMA outlines is, they make us think of all uses and users, right? And the hitch, which is a species, they can't speak for themselves, they are involved in this, that'd be really cool, but they are involved in this process, and we have to consider that, right? So that's exactly what we look for, and you know, hitch surveys are a thing, so we look at that, and we look at the conditions to make sure that our groundwater is safe for not only ag and, you know, available for ag users, but the hitch as well, our groundwater-dependent ecosystems. And there's a chapter specifically in our GSP that outlines that, and I'm going to pass it over if anyone on our consulting team wants to elaborate a little bit more on the hitch.
This is Ibrahim. A really good question, and one of the key projects we, we've included here to advocate for implementation, as we seek potential funding from the state of California, is a win-win project for groundwater, as well as also for hitch, which is the groundwater conjunctive use or groundwater recharge projects on Adobe Creek. Basically trying to see if we can capture additional water supplies and release them down the creek when the creek is dry, to help with the augmenting groundwater recharge, as well as also help with, with the hitch spawning. So that could be a win-win for both parties.
I, I appreciate that. That's what I was looking for, was a response of what does the project look like, and having that summary, that's, that's perfect, and it does mix in with the groundwater as well. So I was just curious, that's the one thing that really stood out. Very hard work, obviously, has been put into this, I just want to share my appreciation for the team.
Yes, thank you for that presentation, and reading through the, the information as well. I was glad that in the presentation, you explained that it's not over yet, and we still have some time, you know, in regards to some of the, some of the different public comments, like when it comes to disadvantaged communities, and, and you know, I, the reason I bring that up is because I know I'm being on different committees that we obtain or are on, at times, if we're not at the table, then of course, naturally, the people that are designated due to their actual designations, whatever it may be, are going to advocate from their perspective, and so that voice isn't heard. And so, I mean, I take it upon myself as well, and I'm pretty sure other supervisors do, to try to find someone to fill that spot, to actually have that voice. And so there's no blame, or there's no anything, I just would like to see that in moving forward, and if there's something I can do to help with that, I'd gladly as well, but I don't want to, you know, belabor any of this. I think we need to move forward and get this done, and appreciate everything you've done with that. And with that, I think we can move to public comment, unless you have something else to add to that.
Nope, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to come up for public comment? And it looks like we do. If you can come up to the microphone, and you state your name, and you have three minutes, and let's try to keep it on, on task with this agenda item, if at all possible.
Joan Moss, I am the recent addition to the Advisory Committee. I was the one member of the public attending one meeting, and there had been one member of the public attending the evening meeting. And I am trying to do my job, I'm trying not to be critical, but I'm trying to do my job, okay? A journalist looks at both sides. I found research from the past that lists the Department of Water Resources as the owner and operator of the Bottle Rock Power Plant. And I found a sustainable management plan for that groundwater that does mention geothermal water. And on the wall, there was a woman that said, I remember, Joan, we did have geothermal water entering the groundwater. And I have articles that might never have been published, I found one that was only in longhand, but I believe that the State Department, this is a big, a big time for me, the State Department of Water Resources owned the Bottle Rock Plant, where accidents took place and toxics were found. So I think there's a conflict of interest with the State Department of Water Resources and the water, and the Sustainable Groundwater Plan being in charge of this plan, when the Bottle Rock Power Plant way up there, the waters went down, and during a period of drought, there was problems. People flushed bathrooms, toilets, and there was warm water. I want to apologize for Eddie Teasdale, he said the groundwater quality is good. What he said is the groundwater quality testing is good, so I want to publicly apologize for him. I read some of this over and over and over, and initially Marina was really happy because I joined, because they do need one member of the public, well, they got one heck of a member. So I'm handing in this, this material. I, I want to be honest, I'm, I'm talking to a lawyer, and I believe that there is a conflict of interest here, and I want to say that. And I also want to say that Ms. Scully had a really good idea about Highland Springs Reservoir and the hitch. And she was a meeting before I was, but she did say it, I read it in the comments, and both Peter Windham and Sarah Ryan are concerned because the hitch haven't spawned in the last two summers because of the drought. And Mrs. Scully had, had an answer, and I'm glad to know that this is not the final, because I thought that where there was going to be another public comment period-
If you can wrap up.
-next spring, where I could talk. But I'm handing in these documents-
Thank you.
-I can get copies, I don't know, it's not to you, I don't know if it's to Marina, I hope you'll share them.
Yes, you can give it to Marina, thank you.
Because it is public record documents-
Excellent.
-from Joan Moss, member of the public, of the Advisory Committee.
Thank you for your service on that committee.
I haven't yet handed these in.
Okay. We appreciate your comments and your service, thank you. Did you want to add something? Yes, thank you.
Is this, okay.
Yes.
Awesome. So just a few clarifications there. So it is not the California Department of Water Resources developing this plan, it is us here at the local level. So our Advisory Committee, again, helped develop this plan, and we do have 10 sitting members on there that the Board did vote in for that, which is on our Groundwater Sustainability Agency Charter document. Again, can be found us, with us, on the third floor, or on Water Resources. And we do have, so there should be no conflict of interest, again, that's the whole objective of this GSP, is to ensure that we at the local level are developing our groundwater sustainability plan, and again, managing it in a sustainable manner at the local level. And I'm going to pass it over to Eddie Teasdale, if you have any additions that you would like to add in terms of geothermal.
Yeah, I know, Joan, thanks for the comment, you know, we've talked about this in the past, and again, you know, through the SIGMA lens, we're, we are required to monitor for water quality, and we've done that, and we're going to continue to do that, so if something does come up, or we, as we go through, you know, filling data gaps, and we find additional information, I mean, obviously, that's going to be incorporated into, into the annual reports and the five-year update. So we're not ignoring it, but we're keeping track of water quality as per required by SIGMA. That's, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, or? I don't see anybody on Zoom that has their hand up. Let's see, no, oh, actually, I do. There we go. Sarah Ryan, if you can unmute and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Sarah Ryan, Environmental Director for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. We submitted a letter, so we, we did participate, or I specifically participated in the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, and I hope if I go over three minutes a little bit, I'd be allowed to, just because I'm on the committee, went through, you know, all of the, the, you know, programmatic development of this groundwater sustainability plan. So first, I'd like to read the letter that we submitted to Marina and Stantec, the consultants, about the, the plan. And then I just have a few other comments besides that, because I think it's important to put it into public record, and also just so that we could potentially comment on it in, in this, or you could respond to it.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I have, Dear Marina, as a representative for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, on the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, I have participated throughout the development of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. The tribe has also used their contractual resources to assist with review of each portion of the plan, and our consultants have brought their considerable skill and knowledge to bear on their review of the plan. There are several insurmountable problems with the groundwater sustainability plan in its draft final form that will be submitted to the California Department of Water Resources in compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. The problems have led to my rejection of this plan as it stands. First, the makeup of the Advisory Committee was not representative of the groundwater users in the Big Valley Basin. Because the majority of the committee members were farmers, this did not allow for a diverse set of views to be robustly discussed. In addition, one seat was not filled, a disadvantaged community seat, and this person could have provided a perspective of the impacts of groundwater management from their unique perspective. The agricultural skew and the decision to go with the majority voting led to several circumstances where an opposing view did not lead to any compromises being developed that would be beneficial to other stakeholders. Second, the timeframe was unreasonably short to discuss and fully evaluate the materials. This resulted from Lake County's decision to submit an alt-GSP, which was not accepted by DWR. For example, the important hydrologic model used data that we were not able to get copies of, and came to conclusions that many on the committee questioned. This made our review incomplete, and based on some information that could not be corroborated. Third, the hydrologic model developed by the consultants also identified undesirable results, which are supposed to be avoided with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, specifically the depletion of surface water due to groundwater pumping. Because of recent comments from California Department of Fish and Wildlife Biologists, we have become aware of the drastic situation of the Clear Lake Hitch, and the fact that there have been several years of no young sighted. We are extremely concerned that the GSP groundwater management of the Big Valley Basin will not prevent the loss of this state-listed species. This plan is supposed to prevent such undesirable results. Fourth, the projects associated with the plan were finalized prior to the model being fully released to the group. If we had known the model identified these undesirable results with surface water depletion, we would have prioritized some projects differently. Fifth, the decisions of minimum thresholds created situations where a percentage of the wells in the Big Valley Basin will go dry. I don't believe that our community understands what they might have to experience, and I don't believe that the Advisory Committee has the right to make decisions that will allow individuals' wells to go dry. Because of these and other issues, I had to vote to reject this plan. So that's the letter that we submitted. I have a couple other comments about the responses to our comments that we've submitted to, to, to the county and to the consultants, and they've responded, and so that's Appendix 7b, or 7, I believe. The first is in, in Appendix 7b, they state organizations represented in the Big Valley GSA, Interested Parties, Interested Parties Database. I just want to point out that this looks a lot better than it is, that even though it lists, for example, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and the Nature Conservancy, and Clean Water Action, that these are actually not, they were not, you know, seats on here, they were not members, they were allowed to comment, as everybody was during the public comment period, but it was not like any of these groups were able to be, you know, robustly representing themselves in, in the dialogue and discussions of the development of this plan. So that's the first thing. The second is that we have been made aware from the Fish and Wildlife Biologist, and I, you know, I hate to, to quote somebody's email, but he, Ben Ewing- but he, Ben Ewing from California Department of Fish and Wildlife said, "I truly believe if we don't do anything, it is possible the hitch will go extinct in the next five years." I'm saying this because of what I've seen in my surveys. So he does electroshocking surveys, you know, on the lake for the last several years. And what Fred, and that's U.S. Fish and Wildlife, what Fred shared with us yesterday. So, you know, these, these comments from the Fish and Wildlife Biologist who identifies that, you know, we have had a distinct loss of hitch that we've seen, really prioritizes for us at Big Valley that we have to be, you know, using the best, not only the best possible data, but also to, to take into account that if we don't have accurate information and even take the precautionary principle, that we could be losing the Clear Lake Hitch. Now, the responses from the, the consultants on our comments about the, the 90% loss of flow and, and the domestic well reduction or domestic wells that are going to go dry, we, we don't agree with their comments. We, we've seen in their model, we've looked at it in terms of climate change and we don't, don't agree with their response to our comments. So we, you know, this is a conversation we obviously have to continue. I know that the county is under the gun in getting this, this plan in. You know, it's the last possible minute. I'm sure you're probably going to approve it today just to make sure the state doesn't get on your back. But I don't think that, you know, that, that that's the right way to go about things, that, that we should have taken the time to not only think about putting meters on the, on the wells of agriculture because that is something that cannabis is required to do, but also to use data that is not just hearsay, which is what we're getting from the agricultural community, about their use for fossil protection and other things. Agriculture in Lake County has been able to, you know, they're doing wonderful things in certain respects. But in terms of the use of our resources, they're for the most part privatizing their profits and socializing the environmental burden and the environmental costs. We've had wells go dry. People are afraid to report their wells because they think they're going to get red tagged or something like that. And it's, it's actually a worse situation than what's being presented in this plan and also with, you know, with, yeah, ultimately with this plan. So thank you for allowing me to have a little bit more time to, to make these comments. I, I know the county put a lot of effort into this and, you know, and we really enjoyed being part of this process. But I don't think that this plan is actually going to meet the requirements of Sigma. We will be making those comments to the State Department of Water Resources as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And just, just to note, the reason why I allowed the extra time is also because the reference to my comment was because I read that letter. I'm not sure if everyone else got a chance to, but I'm pretty sure we have. And appreciate your comments. And Marina, if you had something to add to that.
Yeah, and thank you so much, Sarah, for your comments. Definitely duly noted. And I, I do agree, the conversation needs to continue. And I'm certain that everyone that's been involved with this process can agree with that is this was a quick timeline. I, I can almost be certain when I say that this is record time that a GSA, you know, a county has developed a groundwater sustainability plan in such quick time. You know, and as stated in a previous item, it wasn't a perfect process. We acknowledge that. But we have the opportunity and it is, you know, I can say that I promise upon myself as a representative on, as lead for the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, that these comments are noted and that is what our objective is to work for in terms of our annual report, which is right around the corner. Our five-year career pla, or five-year career plan, our five-year plan as well. And these comments, they're, they're addressed and I don't want folks to think that they are just going to be passed over. That's the whole purpose for these public comment periods and for the going back to this document and making sure that we reach and maintain sustainability. And as Sarah noted, the hitch, you know, they're a priority for us, protecting the hitch. They are, you know, protected species. There's a lot of cultural importance to them and that is a priority for us is making sure that we protect the basin for not only all the other users, even though it is very ag-heavy, but for every uses and users, including, again, those that cannot speak for themselves, including the hitch, including the ecosystem that lays into there. And as Sarah noted, there is another formal public comment period, which is a 75-day public comment period as required by the state. So once, if this is adopted, there's opportunity for comment in the future. And again, all these comments are sent to us. And, you know, I wish we could go back in time. I wish we could have done things differently. But this is our opportunity to make sure that we reach and maintain sustainability for our basin in the local level. And my fear is if we don't, you know, adopt this GSP, that we will lose the microphone or even a voice in that aspect. So Sarah, again, I, I truly appreciate your comments and you have been a huge benefit, you and your team, in developing this. So I, I appreciate your expertise and I, I want to continue with this dialogue. So with that being said, I would like to open it up to our consultants if they have anything else that they would like to add to Sarah's comments.
This Eddie Teasdale, just, just a quick analogy if, for folks on the, on the call. You know, if you imagine, you know, the Big Valley sub-basin was represented by about a gallon of water. Right now, in an average year, they're using about half a gallon of water. So there's a lot of water in the system. And, and so we feel like, you know, based on some of the data that we've got access to, a lot of public data, water levels, water quality, we're not seeing big changes. Now going back to sort of the surface water, groundwater interaction and specifically how that impacts the hitch, I'm, that's a big unknown. And so again, thankfully, because of the Sigma process, we've, we've looked at, we're looking at ways to fill those data gaps and we're actually going to develop a more robust monitoring network within that sort of groundwater, surface water interaction to really understand that data, that dynamic. And again, it's a transparent process. It's going to be real data we're going to collect. And then also I think, you know, as Ibrahim had mentioned previously, you know, we are looking at active projects where we feel like the, the groundwater basin as a whole is balanced. But there's opportunities to take water from places where we know we have a surplus and get those into the right spots, i.e. the creeks, to help sort of offset some of these issues that we're seeing from the fish, by, by being experienced by the hitch. So that's just a sort of a, you know, shout out to kind of what we're trying to do, recognizing we don't have all the best data, but we're looking to kind of move the process forward. We're kind of been forced to do this. And so I think with that, I'll just open it up for comments or if others from the team want to talk, that's great.
Yeah. So just wanted to add to a couple of points. One regarding the protection of wells. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty important we get an assessment, a good handle on domestic well users. And that's kind of one of the key projects we'll be proposing to work on with the Department of Water Resources to do a survey. Because the dataset we have on domestic wells is pretty old. It's public data coming from DWR. And we need to update and figure out which wells are active right now, how this well has been managed, how deep they are. We have, the data, as I mentioned, is based on when the drillers put these wells so back 40, 50 years ago. And so pretty, some of them pretty out of date. So we need to really get a handle on that to help us look at that. As protection, understanding this data gap as protection for, for well owners, domestic well owners, we have put in an adaptive management action plan that will be overseen by the county and also by the Advisory Council Committee as we go down in the implementation. And those, adaptive management will be kicking. Every year they would be a drought or would be any reporting of impact to wells. And then the county, we have a specific set of actions for how to collect information, provide assistance and, and reach out to domestic well owners, kind of connect them with available resources and maybe even take actions with the, with the, in different areas with the groundwater users to help manage specifics. That's, these adaptive management actions I'm talking about is above and beyond any MT. So even before we reach any minimum thresholds or impacts, those adaptive management actions will be taken care of. Will, will, will be happening. So, so that's one. To the hitch question, just building on what Eddie mentioned, I mean, it's, I mean, the hitch is in a really dire situation. And we really need collective action to kind of save the hitch. And I know the Chi Council and the, and the, and the tribe and many others that's kind of, and it's, are really cares about that. From the groundwater perspective, what we're looking at is, we look back at like 30 years back, at least 30 years and some, some areas back to the 1950s and 60s and 70s, we look at the groundwater use in the basin. We don't see significant change in the groundwater used in the basin. I mean, there is some increases, some areas. But overall, the groundwater basin has remained fairly within a, a specific range. And when we modeled the interaction between the surface water and the groundwater, everything kind of remained fairly steady over the last 30 years. Over the same time, we see the decline of the hitch. So we're not saying that there is no impact from the groundwater use to the hitch, but we're saying is there is other factors. And for example, this extreme drought that's happening, climate change, creeks are drying up. And so the action to save the, the hitch is actually would be through the implementation of this conjunctive use project that we kind of talk about to help augment flows in the creek. Because if the creeks are dry earlier in the year, because there is just, because of the precipitation pattern, there's nothing else you could do on the groundwater side to help save the hitch unless you put water on the creek. And that's kind of what's the ultimate solution that we would, we think that's, that's needed. Again, I'm, I'm really, really thankful to all of the input from Sarah and especially her consultant team. They provided a lot of data for us and they engaged with us constructively and helped us improve the plan. And they were really good partners for us throughout the process.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier, it looks like you have your, something to say.
Hi. I just kind of want to respond to the comment that we received. I appreciate the concerns, but I mean, even the document speaks of the lack of a certain amount of information to be able to completely analyze. And part of the process within, what is it, 2042, 2032, for the ongoing years that this will be implemented is to fix and rectify some of these issues. Is there an impact from agriculture? Yes. And I think just kind of like in a neighborhood, you have people with a clean home and a clean yard and you have people with a not-so-clean yard. That doesn't mean we should bulk them all together. And I think the comment was very bulk together. We have farmers who want longevity because that is their lifestyle, that is their livelihood. And others that maybe they're not that smart in thinking in the future and just trying to get away with what's there and, and, and trying to get rich in one year and walk away because they have no more land to use. And that's not good. But I don't think it's agriculture as a whole. I think we all have to figure out how to work together. I think there's so many other factors involved. It's been mentioned already multiple times, global warming. Groundwater has better protection to it because of the evaporation that's probably occurring more so in the creeks than they are in the groundwater. I think that we have rules and regulations that were set in place that makes this impossible to be perfect in the analysis of what's happening. And this is part of the change that California is asking us to make by recognizing that this is a medium, whatever the specific.
Priority basin.
I, I wanted to say threat, but that wasn't the right term. Can you say that again?
Yeah, medium priority basin.
Medium priority basin because they want us to enhance the ability to keep track. I mean, this, this talks about enhanced well monitoring all over on the projects and talks about hitch projects as well. And so I think all of those things that were mentioned in the public comment are there. And I think in the long run, and it talks about installing our own wells that we can go ahead and keep track of, which we have to think of this in a more cumulative way because it's not one, and, and I know that the, the comment that was made that that person recognizes that. But we can monitor this without making an effort that everybody has to submit a well report for what their use is. We can keep track and using Sigma to be able to respond to what's happening to ensure that there is going to be long-term potential for continuing to use the land for whatever's there. Residents are there, recreational farming and things like that. And so I, I think that we're asking for the impossible. If we're going to say, let's pause and make sure that we have all accurate information, I think that, I, I, I don't think, I'm going to assume that you've done everything you can to obtain all the data that you require. But data is also going to be coming to us based on the changes that are being projected to be made because of this document. So that's where I stand. So it's not just a simple approval because it's in front of us. There's a task at hand to make sure that we're paying attention to these things and doing better at how we pay attention and how we react to it.
And I'd just like to follow up with the fact that the state knows that none of these plans submitted from any of the basins around California are going to be perfect. And part of that is addressing those data gaps. And to your point, we are currently submitting grants and have already submitted grants to put in monitoring wells close to streams to better monitor that groundwater stream flow interaction to ensure the sustainability for multi-use benefits. And then also implementing those into the future. And so if, if we're not the ones maintaining this basin, we're not going to be able to apply for these funds to then actually implement these programs and projects to protect the benefits that we deem here as locals as the most important. So thank you.
Actually, we have a hand up and I didn't close public comments. So Betsy, if you can unmute, you have three minutes. And following Betsy, I will close public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions. Is there a relationship between the process for the groundwater sustainability management function and the issuance of new permits by the Community Development Department for projects that will add extraction of groundwater supplies? In other words, is it measured against the available supply to make sure it's not going to impair that? And because many agricultural operations do not require major use permits, will that be changed so that any new use would be included to complete the understanding of what will be impacted for new extraction projects? Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy, for that comment. So perfect segue. So Sigma has not only helped us in terms of our groundwater basin, but also opened up a lot of dialogue between us here at the county level. So, you know, we have to work and we will work and we will continue to work very collaboratively with environmental health in terms of well permitting, getting a better understanding of that process because it goes hand in hand. Same with the Community Development Department. So as you will note, in the, they, the Community Development Department did submit a public comment for our GSP. So again, having these conversations, our groundwater basin has to comply with the rules and regulations of Sigma. So that is something I can't, you know, I can't promise the specifics down the road because that's what we'll figure out. But we have to figure out as it relates to Sigma. So these are conversations that have been happening and will continue to happen. And that's something that we are considering and we will continue to consider.
Thank you. Just a quick question for clarity after reading through everything. I know that you had meetings since April. Was it April or, yes?
Yes.
Were there people that came to talk about wells drying up and things of that nature frequently? Or was there droves of people coming? I mean, we've had droves of people coming about our cannabis projects in all sorts of areas. I thought maybe they'd come to this, but it looks like they have 75 days to comment, right? Okay.
Yeah. So in terms of our public, so all of our Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee meetings and our open house, we did have drought updates as it relates to our Big Valley Basin. But we also, at the recommendation from our, some of our GSPAC members,
members, recommended that we open that conversation greater. So we did look at the tools that are provided by the California Department of Water Resources, specifically their dry well reporting. So we provided any updates in terms of, here are the wells that were reported, but we also did acknowledge that we don't have all of that information. So that's another dialogue that we've continued. To answer your question, Supervisor Crandall, we didn't have a whole bunch of people coming in to report these dry wells, but thanks to the committee members that we had, they have been informed and any of that information. We are starting to create a greater database of that collected. So again, getting any sort of inputs, I know that I've been reached out to by some of your supervisors who have been notifying us, our Department of Wells That Are Going Dry, and then same with Environmental Health, too. So just to open up that dialogue, that is something that we've been informed of, we will continue to address, but just shameless plug, if you are notified of any wells that are going dry, you're more than welcome to give us a call at Water Resources at 707-263-2344 so we can continue to collect that data. So.
Thank you.
You can also report it on MyDryWell, which goes to the state, and it's actually really important to be reporting to the state because then it'll drive funding for us to actually be able to do anything about wells going dry. And to further that point, wells do have a lifespan, they're not going to last forever, so it's important to determine whether a well is running dry because of lowering groundwater well, or levels, or actual poor maintenance of the well, or just it failing because it's a very, very old well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, I just think about it because I've had folks in some of my town councils, I mean, when you think of wells going dry and water problem and us being in a drought, you would think you and I count, unilaterally through the county, they would want to kind of come and advocate for the water drying up, even in this capacity, even though it's not affecting them in their areas, it's still our water. We're worried about water, right? So, thank you for that. I also would like to highlight that I know what, when it comes to the Chi or the hitch, there's a project, I know the Blue Ribbon Committee had passed for the Kelsey Creek to work, I think Sarah Ryan's part of that, so that's one of them. I know, I was working on one as well, but I know that the Water Resources has something working with the Middle Creek. Those are all, they're held back by the state right now in some of the licensing, so I know that once those are cleared, that'll provide another area for the hitch to spawn, so that's going to be a big help.
Yeah, and then just to add off of that, Chair Crandall, you know, the projects that we did, so we have an entire section in our GSP of projects that we have promised upon ourselves to conduct in X amount of years. Once this GSP is approved, if it is so, we have a better chance of obtaining that funding. If it's promised in the GSP, then we are, we are promising ourselves that we will do this. And again, going off of what Supervisor Sabatier said, outlining those gaps as well, we are committing ourselves and holding ourselves accountable to collect the best data possible to get the proper people to the table. So.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Supervisor Sabatier, then, one second.
I just wanted to add, William said something that I've been kind of saying to a lot of people that, kind of like any other infrastructure, kind of like any other building or anything that was put together at one time requires maintenance, and just because your well has gone dry, there may be the need to inspect the well for fixes, upgrades, or repairs. It's not automatically just because the water has gone down. Over the years, many, many years, silt builds up and builds up, which increases, or actually decreases the amount of feet that it goes down. And so there's just all kinds of things that could go wrong, and so that, I'm glad that you made that statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doesn't mean that it's the only reason, but there's definitely the potential.
Joan, I closed public comment, however, I know that you were working with the group, so if you can keep it brief, please come forward and let's see what you have to say.
One question that has not been answered in my mind was what I mentioned at the last public meeting about this, is are members of the committee under restriction by the Brown Act? There's a man who...
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes.
So they cannot talk about it to the public or to each other?
It's covered under the Brown Act. I know that because I read through the minutes and they talked about that.
They are? Because, okay, that's what I want to know.
Thank you.
I'll get that defined at the next meeting. Thank you.
But that doesn't eliminate them from talking to the public.
One second, I know that Ms. Grant...
Well, an open and public meeting by its very nature means the public's allowed to be present, so I'm not sure what confidentiality would be applicable. I can't believe there's any closed session that would be appropriate for this group.
None of it was closed session. A man said, "I've been given a gag order and I'm afraid of violating the Brown Act."
Okay, I don't know where that's coming from, but reading through the minutes, there's just, covering the Brown Act, you can't speak with certain folks or more than one person.
I'll try to get that fixed by whoever the...
Have that person come forward and...
Well, he did, and it was a public meeting, and he cannot talk because he thinks he's subject to the Brown Act, so I'm talking for him.
Thank you.
As a member of the press, I can say anything I want.
Joan, thank you.
Just to be clear, members of the press have the same rights as members of the public, it's not an elevated right. But also, to be further clear, an individual is not subject to the Brown Act. Your board is subject to it as a collective, and each of your members can violate it, but a private individual has no such compunction.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Ms. Deligianis, please go ahead and continue.
Yeah, so with that being said, if there's no more comments from the GSA or from the public, we are hoping for adoption today of our Groundwater Sustainability Plan if the public hearing is closed. So with that further ado, I'm going to pass it over to you, Mr. Chair.
I'll close the public hearing, and it looks like actually Supervisor Pyska has something to add.
I want to thank you for all of your work, and I also want to thank Sarah Ryan for her comments. And, you know, this is not a perfect process, but the important thing is that we're moving forward, we're committed to the work, we all have the same priorities, we want sustainability, we want the hitch survival, we want all of these things, and we're going to continue to work together and move through this and upgrade and adapt and evolve as we go. So I'm supportive of this, recognizing that it's a work in progress, and we're all committed to continuing the work.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, want to thank everybody for the hard work, you know, to bring this to today. And once again, too, to do the same things Supervisor Pyska and Sabatier and everyone who's acknowledged the letter from Big Valley. Sarah, I know we've got work to do. You brought up some very good points in your letter as we move forward. It's a partnership here at local government, our local stakeholders, that we move forward. You know, EJ's tribe probably has a name, Cots, that's what we call the hitch here in Lake County for Middletown people, Cotsa Taw. So, you know, it's a part of our history and our culture, it's a part of who we are. I don't know, you know, I know myself as a young man was able to experience harvesting the hitch and drying the fish for our needs as a tribe. We don't get to do that anymore. So bringing and saving that piece of who we are as the native and the indigenous people here is very important. So Sarah brings up a huge, a huge issue for us as natives here in the county. So the collaboration between the county and the tribes in this nation, I think, just need to continue to grow. I've heard that there are opportunity for projects and helping move things forward. I think this is one step of that, and yeah, nothing is perfect. So, you know, it's very important to us that we do this in collaboration with all stakeholders because we know farming has been happening, you know, for the past 400 years in these basins, but for thousands of years, life was sustained off of this natural lake and the hitch that were here for the native people. So, very important that we always keep those in mind. It's not just losing a species, it's losing a piece of the people that come from this land, and it's very important that we always remember that. Just as some of our languages had to be revived here locally, which we have seven dialects that were spoken here across this county, are, you know, just something that we always remember. And I know, coming from the tribal side, who appreciate the collaboration to having the tribes at the table, you know, and the other stakeholders to talk about these very important issues. So we've got work to do, and I'm glad to hear that there are opportunity for more public comment and more collaboration as we move forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon.
Right. And so it looks like we have no other comments, and I think we can, we'll look for action.
I believe there's a resolution.
Right, there's a resolution, so.
Go ahead, I'll first.
Offer the resolution.
I think you can just offer the resolution as described in the staff report.
I'll offer the resolution as described in the staff report.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor, sorry, I lost my transplant. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everyone. I'm looking for, I'm very looking forward to the next steps in this. So thank you, everyone who participated, and this is a big, big milestone for us. So thank you all for your time.
All right. Excellent.
Great job, Marina.